Good to the July 10th formal meeting for the Planning Commission. My name is George Alcarez, I'm the chairman. Today, we have everyone here but Commissioner Cromwell. So before we get started, I'd like to have Ms. Byler say the prayer, followed by Ms. Hippen with the pledge.
We look to the heavens for guidance and to give thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to live and work in Virginia Beach communities, to enjoy the beauty of our ocean, rivers, and forests. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in self-government and to have our voices heard. Knowing that there is strength and diversity, we pray that we will have open minds to receive diverse opinions and that we will treat each other respectfully.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. At this moment, I'd like to introduce ourselves and I'd like to start at my far right over here with our legal, and we'll go down the list all the way to the city staff.
Tori Eisenberg, Deputy City Attorney of Land Use.
Michael Mottch, I am fortunate enough to represent the entire city as the at-large representative.
Good afternoon, Naomi Astares, representing District One.
Hi, Mike Anderson, I'm representing District Three.
Kathryn Byler, District Four, which is Virginia Beach Town Center and the greater area, all the way up to the Norfolk border.
George Alcarez, District Five.
Holly Quayar, District Eight.
Brian Plumley, representing beautiful District Six.
Susan Hippen, representing District Seven, Salem High School, Tallwood High School, Level Green and College Park neighborhoods.
John Kostin, District Nine.
William Parks, representing District Ten.
Caitlin Alcock, Planning Administrator. Clerking to my left, we have Madison Eichols and Kristen Bauer. In the audience, we have Planning Director Kathy Warren, Deputy Director Carrie Bookholt. With our Planning Administration team, we have Marcel Coleman, Elizabeth Nowak, and Alexis Bailey. With our Zoning Administration Group, we have Zoning Administrator Kevin Kemp, Deputy Zoning Administrator Brandon Hackney. We have Garrett Hannigan and Lane, sorry, Lane Harrington. And then also with the planning staff, we have Aubreacher Billcock and Rachel Miller.
All right. Now, if we could get the clerk. You want me to go?
This is good.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission-
Your mic's not on. Can you hear? I'm sorry.
The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. As a courtesy to all in attendance, we request that if you have a cellphone, to please silence it for the duration of this public meeting. The following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. The Order of Business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. For WebEx speakers, once your name is called, please pause for two to three seconds to begin to ensure the commissioners hear your complete remarks. As only one audio feed can be opened at a time, do not ask, "Can you hear me?", as you will not be able to hear a response. If a speaker does not respond, or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in form of recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that you have your, or we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next order of business is for consideration to request for withdrawal or deferrals. Are there any withdrawals? Any applicants that would like to withdraw their application today? Are there are none? Are there any applications that would like, or applicants that would like to defer their? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing item number 12, Virginia Beach Drywall, an indefinite deferral. We'd hopefully be back next month, but it might be the month after.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have an applicant requesting for, what, I'm sorry, what number? 12, sorry. Number 12 to be with, to be deferred indefinitely.
Move to defer.
Mr. Plumley? I need a second.
Second.
By a vote of 10 to 0, agenda item number 12 has been recommended for indefinite deferral.
All right, thank you. Are there any other applicants that would like to defer their application? Okay, that completes that part. At this time, I'd like to pass it on to our vice chair.
Excuse me, Chairman? Yeah, can we do the minutes?
I'm sorry, thank you. I need a motion for Jan, for June 12th's minutes to be approved.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hippen?
Second.
Second by Ms. Quayar.
By a vote of 10 to 0, the minutes from June 12th, 2024, have been recommended for approval, approved.
All right, great, thanks for reminding me on that. At this time, I'd like to pass it on to our vice chair for the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Today, we have nine items on the consent agenda. These are applications that are recommended for approval by staff and the Planning Commission concurred, and there are no speakers signed up in opposition. I'd like to go ahead with item number one. Irvin James, please. Is there a representative here today?
Thank you, Ms. Quayar. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Mr. James. Mr. James' application, he's the owner of this property for his family for close to a century. We appreciate the work of Marcel Coleman and the JRP Group and all the conditions as, excuse me, it's proffered, I'm sorry. We appreciate being on consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Mottch to read this into the record.
The applicant is requesting to rezone this 28,130 square foot parcel along Painter's Lane from AG2 Agricultural District to Conditional R10 Residential District to create two single-family residential building lots. The request to rezone this site from AG2 to Conditional R10 is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's vision for the suburban area development. Within this area focuses on creating and maintaining great neighborhoods. Based on the consideration, staff recommendation, and the commission recommends approval of this request subject to the proffers.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number four, Caliber Bodyworks of Virginia. Can a representative please come forward?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Christina Luiza. I represent Caliber Bodyworks of Virginia, DBA Caliber Collision Centers, and I consent to the conditions that were put upon us.
Okay, great, thank you very much. You may be seated. And is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Parks to read this into the record.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage on this conditional I-1 industrial-y zone property. The applicant intends to use three existing units in an industrial condominium building for their repair garage, which is approximately 4,500 square feet. There are no exterior, no planned exterior alterations, and no letters of opposition on file with five letters of support on file. Hearing that, we've placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number five, Scott Griffith Aldrich and Julia Waring Aldrich, trustees under the Aldrich Family Trust.
Again, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Mr. and Mrs. Aldrich and their trust. All six conditions, as recommended in the staff report, are acceptable. Appreciate Elizabeth's work with my client's architect on this project, and put on the record that North End Civic League Zoning and Land Use Subcommittee reviewed this, and they have no objections whatsoever.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Plumley to read this into the record.
The Aldrich Family Trust is the applicant. The property is 243rd Street, Virginia Beach. They're seeking and requesting a non-conformity to alter and expand an existing dwelling in Cavalier Shores neighborhood. Cavalier Shores is a historic district listed in the National Register of Historic Places. There not being a significant alteration, it has received the recommendation of our excellent staff, and the Planning Commission is agreeable to place this on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Item number six is Nova Trampoline Park, Virginia Beach, LLC. And I understand the applicant is remote. If you could please state your name for the record.
The applicant is attempting to call into WebEx at this time. He was unable to connect with the web platform.
Okay, so I'll just go on to the next one and then come back. Thank you. Item number seven. Brian L. Harris is the applicant. Is there anyone here today? Welcome, if you could please state your name for the record.
Brian Harris.
And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Byler to read this into the record.
Applicant Brian Harris and Mason Landscaping Incorporated are the applicants. They are requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile repair garage in an existing building at 212 South Gate Avenue and the parcel immediately adjacent to the south. Both parcels are zoned I-1 light industrial. The applicant became aware of the need to obtain a conditional use permit after he had already signed a lease and had begun operating on the site. They submitted an application as soon as they learned, and they have worked hard with staff in order to come up with a plan that is acceptable. After having worked with staff, they do now have staff approval, and we know of no opposition. Therefore, it appears to be a good item for the consent agenda. I will just note that if accepted, this recommendation is for five years only as it is part of an overlay area and a transition area in the SGA.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, William Daddio and Jean Gentry.
Again, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the applicants. We again appreciate being on the consent agenda. Elizabeth's work is also appreciated, and the four conditions are acceptable. I wanted to just add one little piece of information based on the conversation you all had in the informal. In Croatan, these alleys, it's City Council adopted a policy back in the early 90s to have them, that everybody closed them. And so it's been a process that's ongoing. It's accelerated in the last number of years, thankfully. So it's actually a policy that council adopted, and there's a, you know, a set process. It doesn't require people to go out and hire an appraiser and do an appraisal. There's already an established price for the portions of the alleys in Croatan. Just, all of these street closure and alley closures, they're not all the same. There's a lot of little nuances to them. I thought I'd just put that out there. But what Mr. Plumley had said earlier is the, is the normal practice. And but in this situation with Croatan, they've established a policy, the council did, and it's the city policy to get these alleys closed.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition for this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Parks to read this into the record.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to close a portion of the platted unnamed and unimproved alley adjacent to the rear lot lawn. As shown in the submitted street closure exhibit, the proposal includes closure of half of the 15-foot alley totaling 375 feet. Street closures to the north and south of this property have already been approved by City Council. And hearing no opposition, we have felt it was appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Item number 10, Diamond Pharaoh Star Real Estate LLC.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, welcome. Could you please state your name for the record?
Diamond Pharaoh.
And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Kostin to please read this into the record.
The applicant is proposing to operate an event rental space within a 1,050-square-foot unit in the existing building on the site. Per the zoning ordinance, an event venue is classified as an assembly use, and as such, a conditional use permit is required for property in the B2 Community Business District. Specifically, the applicant proposes to rent the venue to the public for small gatherings such as networking events, business meetings, receptions, birthday gatherings, and other various small private events. The, we discussed the item in early meeting and deemed that this item was appropriate for the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Item number 13, Bonnie Bright.
For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Bonnie Bright. The owner of the property is Roseanne Bright Ray. They are cousins. And the house on this property was built in, it was built 67 years ago. We didn't have a floodplain subject to special restrictions until 24 or 25 years ago, either 1999 or 2000. So the house is not flooded. And the situation, because the conversation in the informal, is not at all unique to the southern part of the city. All right, there are scores, even hundreds, of houses that are, that were built before 2000 that are in floodplains subject to special restrictions. So it's, it's not an unusual circumstance at all. And as staff has said, we are tearing down a house on the larger parcel. That will be put in the ARP program. Mr. Bright farms all the property around there, including, he's been farming this property as well for many, many decades. The three conditions as recommended by staff are acceptable and appreciate being on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Mottch to read this into the record.
The subject property was created by deed on July 8, 2003. This constituted an improper subdivision of land as a subdivision plat is required to legally separate the parcels. The application seeks to create two lots. Lot one will serve as a home site for the existing dwelling at 5649 Buzzard Neck Road. Lot two is planned to be sold to the neighboring property owner and applicant for an agricultural use and future application for enrollment in the Agricultural Reserve Program. For these reasons, we ask for this agenda item to be placed on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Item number 14, Logan's Towing and Service.
Once again, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Logan's Towing Service. We appreciate this being on the consent agenda. All 10 conditions, including the five-year limitation, are acceptable. Mr. Logan operates, has operated for decades behind what is now Lowe's at London Bridge. And, and his business there until five or 10 years before he left that location, because he had to leave that location, included towing. He does not tow, and he hadn't towed for at least a decade. So the name in there is not reflective of the business. It's just the service, as was stated, and all conditions are acceptable.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Byler to please read this into the record.
Logan's Towing and Service Incorporated is the applicant. South Gate LLC is the property owner. They are requesting a conditional use permit to operate an automobile repair garage in the existing buildings at 225 and 229 South Gate Avenue. The parcel is currently zoned I-1 light industrial. The hours of operation are expected to be 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, as this is in an overlay area, and the city has designated it as an area that hopefully will be going more community-centric. There is a five-year time limit on this.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go back to agenda item number six. Has the applicant been able to connect on WebEx?
Yes, they have.
Okay. Thank you for being with us here today. If you could please state your name for the record.
Hello? Hi, my name is June Wang. I'm with Nova Trampoline Park.
Thank you very much for being with us today. And are all the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes, I accept.
Thank you very much. Is there any opposition to this item being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I've asked Commissioner Hippen to read this into the record.
The applicant is requesting a modification of conditions to a 2013 conditional use permit for approximately 18,150 square-foot indoor commercial recreation facility at the Salem Crossing Shopping Center, to increase the size to 55,046 square feet and to permit other indoor recreational activities aside from trampolining. This application was deferred at the December 13, 2023 Planning Commission hearing to allow the applicant time to obtain the necessary disclosure statements from the property owner and the sub-landlord. The applicant intends to use the entirety of the former Kroger's Formal Training Center in the Salem Crossing Shopping Center for this use. A portion of this area had previously been used as the former Sky Trampoline Park. Condition one of the current conditional use permit limits the condition, limits the facility to the southmost unit of the Salem Crossing Shopping Center, and will need to be modified to include this second unit. Nova Trampoline will provide indoor trampolines, arcade, and virtual reality games and similar amusements. Condition seven of the current conditional use permit limits the facility to trampoline-related activities only. The applicant seeks to remove this condition to permit the other amusements as listed. The proposed hours of operation are 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday, noon to 11:00 p.m. on Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday. 25 to 30 employees are expected. There is sufficient parking on-site. Exterior alterations are limited to the installation of new signage. With the excellent work of our staff personnel getting us the information, and hearing no objections, we have asked that this be put on the consent agenda.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, that was the last item on the consent agenda. The Planning Commission places the following applications on the consent agenda. Items number one, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 13, 14.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I move that these items be approved by consent.
I got a motion by Ms. Quayar, I need a second.
I need to just note abstentions, I'm sorry. Four and 14.
Thank you. Okay, I got it. Let me get a second, and then I'll-
Second.
Second by Ms. Kostin. Any abstentions?
Abstaining on items four and 14 for reasons set forth in a letter with the city.
Thank you.
And I am abstaining from the item on Pembroke Lake Circle. I'm sorry, I'm missing the number.
Agenda 10.
Item number 10, for reasons stated in the letter that I've provided to the city attorney.
All right, thank you.
The vote is now open. By a vote of 10 to 0 with an abstention on item four, one abstention on item 10, and one abstention on item 14, agenda items number one, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 13, and 14 have been recommended for approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So if your application's been approved, if you can get with the staff member you've talked to, they can kind of inform you when you'll be in front of City Council. Our next agenda will be the regular agenda. And Madam Clerk, call the first one up, please.
Yeah, agenda items number two and three, Thalia Plaza LLC, a conditional rezoning request for a B2 Community Business District and R5 Residential Duplex District to Conditional B4 Mixed-Use Business District and Subdivision Variance, Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, at 4317 Virginia Beach Boulevard and 216 North Fur Avenue in District Four.
Can the applicant or representative come forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairwoman, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Chris Pocke. I'm a land use and zoning attorney with Walcott Rivers Gates here in Virginia Beach. And it's my privilege to represent the applicant in this case, Thalia Plaza LLC. I want to thank the planning staff, especially on this matter, because it's taken about two or three years of coordination with the city staff. They've done a remarkable job in coordinating with our architects and engineers and my client to coordinate a plan to put forward and eventually recommend approval by the staff. So I wanted to thank them. As was alluded to, this is a conditional rezoning request and a request for subdivision variance. And this property is located in between two SGAs, both Pembroke and Rosemont. And so to comply with Comprehensive Plan and the zoning ordinance, we've had to do quite a bit of research and coordination in that regard, and we appreciate all the efforts. This is a mixed-use development that's being proposed. There's going to be retail on the first floor of the building being proposed. On the second two floors, the second and third, there would be residential, so four units per floor. And then on top, a rooftop amenity space, as you'd see in the, in the concept plan. The parking spaces being proposed exceed that which is required by the city, so 26 parking spaces. And in this area, because there's an emphasis, especially two, on non-vehicular transportation, there's also eight bicycle spaces. So that exceeds the five required by the ordinance. There's a building on the front of the property, on the Virginia Beach Boulevard adjacent property. And then there's a single-family residence structure on the portion to the rear. That front structure has been a couple of different things over the last couple of decades. And most recently, it was a Domino's Pizza. And over the last couple of months, when we've been engaging with the community, the Thalia Civic League has brought it to our attention. There's been some graffiti there, which my clients have responded to rather quickly and promptly with the city and removed that. So what they'll do is remove that building and the structure to the rear, and then propose to develop this mixed-use building. The property itself, it's two parcels adjacent to one another. And across the street on North Fur, there's a church just to the east adjacent to the side- North Fur, there's a church just to the east adjacent to the site. There is a practice, a medical practice, and to the rear, there's a single-family residence. So there's a bit of variety in terms of usage in that corridor, in that area, some commercial, some residential, and then church. We've been coordinating for the last month and a half or so with the community, with the Thalia Civic League, which is across the street, as well as the church across from North Fur, the residences to the rear, and then also the practice to the east. So far, we've received no opposition from the church across the street, and in some cases, an indication from the pastor of support. We expect a formal letter in the near future. And then from the Thalia Civic League, there's been no formal mention or expression of opposition. And then the same goes for the practice to the east. To the rear, there was a letter and email sent from the owner of that property indicating some concern or question about value of his property. And based on the concept plan, the current condition of the property, I think one could make the conclusion that it's most reasonable to expect property values, including his, would increase. The concept plan was done in coordination with the city, as I mentioned, because of the location of this property, there's some more stringent requirements in terms of lot size and lot width and things, and so there's a request for a subdivision variance there. And then I also wanted to mention a couple of items that came up in the informal meeting earlier today that you wouldn't see in the staff report, but we wanted to remark on those nonetheless. The first one was about tree loss in the area, and so the city is making a concerted effort from observations and reports that I've read that we're trying to preserve a tree canopy as a city. And so what this proposal will do is it will remove the four existing large canopy trees on-site, replace them with four existing or proposed canopy trees of the same size, and then also add seven small trees. So not only will there not be a net loss in trees, there'll be a net gain in tree coverage. The second item was the active transportation plan, and so I just wanted to notify the Planning Commission that that will get sorted out and coordinated with the city during the site plan review process. I have my clients, the owners and operators of Thalia Plaza LLC, with me today, Patricia Mohammed-Jami, and they're also happy to answer any questions and to speak to the application. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be before you today, and we appreciate the staff's hard work on this project.
All right, Mr. Pakta, just to make sure, are there any speakers? There are none?
No, sir.
All right, so what I'm going to do is just ask for our commissioners to ask any questions if they have at this time. You can stay here. Yes.
Thank you, Attorney Pakta, and thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Jami. I appreciate very much your willingness to come in and take a vacant building and invest your efforts and your finances to something that really, I believe, is the face of that area in the future. So I'm excited about this project. I was concerned about those two items you just noted, and as I understood it during the informal session, there would in fact be a net loss of trees due to this development. So I would just like to hear someone from city staff tell me that in fact we're picking up an extra four trees and we're not losing any.
Commissioner Beiler, I'm not sure we have that information. We weren't sure what the net loss or gain was with tree canopy based on this conceptual plan. All we could say was that the concept plan meets the landscaping requirements for the proposal, but we weren't sure the net loss or gain. So it sounds like Representative Pakta has cleared that up.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Anderson.
Thanks for coming up. It's a really nice project. I think it's going to help the area, but my, it's not a question, but it's a statement that you mentioned about the graffiti. Well, as of Friday, yesterday, it's still there, so it does need to be cleaned up.
Commissioner Anderson, if I may, there have been two notices, and I appreciate you reminding us of that. There have been two notices in the last month, I think, and the first one, we addressed promptly and removed it. And we've since been noticed, I believe it was last week.
Yeah, we were at our site visit. We talked about it, but I go by there every day and just happened to look over there on, driving towards Town Center and saw it.
Right. So I'm going to make two representations. One is that we'll be in coordination with the city on taking care of that, and two, I think that that's also probably one of the other justifications for a proposed development like this, to remove the opportunity for that. Yeah, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Mouch.
More of a statement. Just want to thank the applicants for, right now, y'all are kind of in between two SGAs, and you've kind of raised the bar for the area that's there by conforming to one of the SGA standards, which goes above and beyond what you have had to do, and having a real creative use of the space. So thank you for that.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Plumley.
I just wanted to ask staff a couple of questions before we wrapped up the hearing. Currently, there is a proposal to modify this application between now and council, but the determination has been made by staff, and I just want it on the record, it's been determined to be of a minor nature and does not need to be incorporated into the motion for today. Is that accurate? And I believe also that it was asked earlier whether there was any tree canopy requirement currently that was any part of an overlay on this particular property, and the answer was no. Is that accurate?
Correct. There's no canopy coverage requirement. The requirements are for parking lot coverage, street frontage, building landscaping, and then the buffering requirement. So all of that is met with this plan.
Thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, sir, you can be seated.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to close this and ask for additional discussion or entertain a motion. Ms. Beiler.
I don't want to cut off any discussion, so y'all feel free to tell me it's not timely, but if there is no further discussion, I would like to make a motion that this application be approved.
I have a motion by Ms. Beiler.
I'll second the motion for Ms. Beiler, but I would like to discuss it briefly.
Yes. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Plumley.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This is an excellent project, and we need excellent projects. I don't want folks that put all these plans together and this money behind it to be discouraged at all. I think this is what we need, and this is one of the areas we needed in. As far as the tree canopy, I know there's some discussion of that, but I do want to be heard that if we're going to change the law of this city, that we do it in a formal manner. If we're going to propose a no reduction of tree canopy, that we do it as a city, that our council approves of that, and that we not bring that upon individual applicants as an additional requirement to the approval. Otherwise, I would consider it to be an arbitrary decision that if it's not the law, that we're placing upon the applicant some additional burden that isn't part of the law. Fortunately, that is not true on this application, but I wanted to clarify because it could become an issue. If we're going to do it, then it would be this broad policy discussion, we'd pass it along as a recommendation, which I'm not necessarily opposed to, then we'd pass it to the city council, it would be considered, and then we'd make it the law, so people making applications would be on notice that that was a requirement. So I just wanted to be heard on that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, I'll close. We do have a motion by Ms. Beiler and second it. I'm sorry, who was that?
Mr. Plumley.
I'm Mr. Plumley.
The vote is now open. By a vote of 10 to 0, agenda items number two and three have been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Agenda item number nine, Gordon R. Crenshaw and Hannah I. Crenshaw for a street closure at 1217 and 1223 North Bayshore Drive in District 6.
Come forward.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local attorney with Wilcox Savage, and I'm here today on behalf of Gordon and Hannah Crenshaw. We'd like to recognize Rachel Miller for her work on this. I've also been in communication with Lucy Whitlow in the city attorney's office, so we've had the help of a lot of folks in your city staff, and we're always appreciative of that. As the staff report indicates, my clients are the Fee Simple owners of Lot 3, which you should see on your aerial, and the northern portion, or the northern 80-foot portion of Lot 4 in the North Linkhorn Park subdivision, and that's depicted on the aerial that you have in front of you. These lots comprise the residential property, which is 1217 North Bayshore Drive. This property has a very, very interesting history, and for that reason, we submitted a status of title with the application that shows that our clients are actually the owners in Fee Simple of Windsor Road, the section of Windsor Road between the prior lots 2 and 3. So their lot and the lot to the north is where Windsor Road is located. And you may be wondering, well, how did that happen? Back in the, well, I guess you have to go back to when this neighborhood was originally subdivided, back in the 1920s. At that time, most subdividers retained the right of the fee to the streets that they were creating. What does that mean? It means their subdivision plat only conveyed the city an easement for access. So your modern subdivision ordinance, what happens today with a brand-new ordinance, the city actually gets the fee to the street and not just an easement. So when you close a modern subdivided street, what you do is you're going to sell the fee to the owner on either side of the center of the right-of-way. So that's the modern. This is a very, very old subdivision, as you all probably are aware, and at that time, you could actually, the subdivider retained the fee. So fast forward from the 1920s to the 1980s, a prior owner, Vernon Vale, actually went through the chancery court process at the time of having to create a receiver for the assets of North Linkhorn Park, the subdivider, and acquired through a court action from the original subdivider the interest, the fee interest that was in Windsor Road. Vernon Vale then sold Windsor Road and 1217 North Bayshore Drive to Emily and Craig Singliff, who are actually the grandparents of my clients, the Crenshaws. So this is a property that's been developed with a home and a private driveway, as you all can see on the aerial, for over 70 years now, from at least the 1950s and before, there was a private driveway here and a street. The prior owner went through the process of acquiring the street, so he owned it. My client's grandmother, there was some thought to go through the street closure process. They didn't go through it at the time. Now my clients own the property, and they would like to formally close the street. And in this case, what that means is removing or vacating, as I think was said at the staff meeting, vacating the easement that the city has for public access. So I just wanted to lay that out for you because this is a very unique situation, and you're only going to have this with one of these very old subdivisions. So they do own the fee. The process, as Mr. Plumley indicated, is somewhat state law-driven, right? So your conditional use permit, your rezoning process is different from your street closure process. Street closure is dictated by state law and City Code, Chapter 33, 111-112, and what that says is you've got three reviewers, and their job is literally to go look at the section of street, and they make a determination as to whether or not there's any indication that the public has used the street, that the public would be inconvenienced by the termination of the city's rights of access. And in this case, the three reviewers went out to the site, they agreed that there was no public use, and in fact, through historical records, it's been a private driveway to this home since the 1950s. They make that recommendation to your city staff, but it's the reviewers who do that technical review. As was indicated in the staff report, the city Public Works Department would like to retain an easement for drainage, for their future purposes. As you can see, that 20-foot northern section, that would be an underground drainpipe for some point in the future, and then they want to retain that 10-foot strip that you can see there in red, and that is because the road is simply not that wide, so they want to retain that portion of the right-of-way. You know, as I mentioned, this process is a somewhat unique process. It's not often that the property owner requesting the street closure owns the street in fee. That makes this very different. The facts, obviously, this has been a driveway for the last 70 years plus, also makes this different. So I wanted to make sure I addressed in advance some of the questions that came up. I'm not sure what this particular, I do understand we have one gentleman sign up to speak. I'm not sure what his particular issue is with this, and I'm happy to address it, but I just wanted to give you all the overall history and the background. And again, as Mr. Plumley mentioned, the standard for this is, will the public be inconvenienced by the termination of this easement? And the viewer's position, staff's position, and our position is that the public, excuse me, would not be inconvenienced. And so we're respectfully requesting that you recommend approval of the street closure application. We've reviewed the conditions the staff has attached, their standard street closure conditions, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. Any questions? None. All right, we'll hear the speaker, and we'll have you, give you a chance to rebut.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Stan Zerwinski? Cool.
If you could just state your name and your location, and also, you have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. I'm Stan Zerwinski, and I live in the neighborhood in question, and I have three concerns, and they center on exactly the points made about public access. The first one is, is the public good-served by closing off public access to property that has been public available for 60 years? My second one is precedent. In this neighborhood, there are several of these type areas where there's convoluted ownership, but the community essentially has access to those, and one of those, very close to the one in question, is called Lee Beach. And the concern there is, if we close this one, does the owner adjacent to Lee Beach say, gee, I want the same? And we fall into this domino position where the community loses something that's very valuable to us. My third point is on public input. My understanding is the civic league is of divided opinion on such public access, and this has been something that's come up for a long, lot of years, and I would request that we actually solicit the input from the community, have the civic league ask what people think about public access before we make a decision on this, and essentially have a, really a plan for once on how to handle this in our community. It's been going on for 60, 70 years. My point is, what's the harm in another 60, 70 days to get fulsome input from the community?
All right, thank you. Any questions for him? Yes, sir. Ms. Plumley.
Please say your name again, I'm sorry.
Sure. Stan Zerwinski.
Zerwinski.
Sure.
Mr. Zerwinski, how close to this parcel do you reside?
Oh, several blocks, a couple blocks away.
Are you closer to the Lee Beach access?
No, I'm closer to this one.
You're closer to this one?
Yes.
Have you ever used this access?
I was on it just the other day. I have pictures.
Let me finish my question. So with regards to the one we're talking about, you've been walking up and down through that driveway?
I have, yes.
Okay. Is anyone, any other member of the public aware of using that access?
I have no idea, and that's my point.
So you're not aware of anyone?
Right. So that's my point about soliciting public access, public input, to see what we think about it.
I heard that, but my question was whether you had observed anyone using the access, and I think you haven't. Is that fair?
I don't have eye view of it. I mean, I'm not, I don't have sightline on it, so I don't know who does it.
I'm just asking if you've viewed, if you've seen them.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
But I haven't seen people use others either, so.
Okay. Well, I'm just asking a question. Okay, it has an answer. So with regards to this public access, have you talked to members of the public? Have you appeared before the civic leagues or made recommendation?
No.
Okay. No other questions?
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, sir, thank you. You can be seated. You can come forward. Any comments to what was just said?
Yeah, just a few things. I wanted to point out that Eric I wanted to point out that Eric Gardner, who, with WPL, who's the engineer that worked on this project, he did, in fact, talk to the civic league, the canvass the civic league. They received some questions, they provided feedback. My clients, Hannah and Gordon Crenshaw, who are here today and available to answer questions, they've spoken with a lot of their neighbors. I was remiss in indicating to you that there were two emails of support from folks that were directly adjacent to the property, so I wanted to point that out. We've got the Illes, Peter and Molly Ille, who are also here today, that can speak to the history of use of the site. If you look at the aerial or the photographs that you all have of the sign and the street, I mean, it's pretty obvious that it's a private driveway. In fact, back in the 80s, our client obtained two encroachment agreements to install riprap near the end of the property at the waterfront. And certainly, if this was an area that the city was going to leave open for public access, they wouldn't have allowed riprap because that's inconsistent with that type of shoreline erosion feature. As Mr. Plumley indicated, just a block and a half away is Lee Road, or the Lee Road Beach Access. I'm not aware of the title status of that strip, but certainly, that is a strip that is used for access to the water, and there's a sandy beach area.
All right, I'm going to ask your questions. Mr. Plumley.
If this easement were to remain, do you know of any limitation on the hour of night someone could go walking through this private driveway?
I mean, it was--
Or what they could possess on them as they walk through this private driveway?
No, I mean, my clients have young children, and I certainly wouldn't think they would want folks traipsing back through all hours of the night. Nor is there really any indication that there have been folks walking up and down, back and forth along this.
Are you aware of even it's convenient to reach the water from this point with a boat or with any kind of water, you know, recreational?
Again, the driveway actually stops just a little bit behind where the house line is, and it's grass, and then riprap. So there wouldn't be any reason for somebody to try to get to the, get to the water that way.
And as far as the Lee Road access, that's a much more heavily-used location by the public on a regular basis than it's just a block and a half away. Is that fair to describe that way?
Correct, and it's very obviously a beach access.
Okay.
Correct.
I don't have any other questions.
All right, any other questions from the commissioners? All right, you can be seated. This time, I'll close for public input and open it for discussion or entertain a motion.
I do have a motion.
Okay.
I would move to approve this application for the, basically, a modification of this public easement as proposed.
All right, a motion by Mr. Plumley. I need a second. Second by Mr. Anderson. At this time, again, I'll ask, is there any other comments? Mr. Monk.
Just for discussion, I'm not even sure if this was aware by the public that they had use of the property, but at the same time, that also means that it's not really putting anybody out because even if they didn't have use or know that they had use of it, has staff identified any other locations that might have this type of scenario come up in the future in this area?
We did not look into that as part of this request.
Okay.
We certainly can get that information for you.
Yeah, all right. I don't feel as though it is going to put anybody from the public, I do understand that we do have one speaker here that, that has used it. I'm not, I'm not sure how much it's been used by them or not, but I don't feel like it's going to be putting the public out, especially since there is public access a block and a half away as well. So it is staff's recommendation for approval, and for that reason, I am going to vote yes.
Yeah, Ms. Spiler.
So I was a little concerned about this application, and I did hear some verbal opposition to it, but no one felt strongly enough to make a formal opposition statement. So I drove out and looked at it, and it seems to me that what the city is doing is just changing their easement and saying, we're no longer using it, or we have no intent of using it in the future for water access, for pedestrian traffic or otherwise. We only need it for drainage. So we're giving away something that the city currently has a right to, and we're modifying it to something less, and we're doing it without compensation. And to the extent that these are really expensive, valuable parcels of property, and there are a lot of people inside the neighborhood or other parts of the city that might want to use that access, I was very sensitive to it. And I do think that applications such as this one deserve scrutiny and deserve our going out and looking at and considering it on a case-by-case basis. But having done so, I will support the motion.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? None? Are there any? Oh, sorry, Mr. Plumley.
And the only reason I'm going to drone on for just a minute is because I think this is going to be considered by council. This is going to come back up to council, and so I do want to put some very specific So far, this body has yet to turn down a road closure. I think the gentleman brought up precedence. Well, it is precedence of this body that we've not rejected it, particularly under the circumstance of the city recommendation. It is a city-driven ownership. And so we looked at the staff to evaluate through all the departments that are impacted, and they weighed in. They said, we want drainage, we want right-of-way. I think everyone understood that we did not want people walking with their beach carts through a private driveway at the middle of the night to do whatever could be done there. It's well-established just down the road that that is an appropriate location, and I think this is going to be discussed before council, so I wanted to make that point. We say that the standard is it will not result in public inconvenience. It doesn't mean no inconvenience. It doesn't mean, it's not giving away something belonging to the public. But I think the public established its disinterest in this location over many decades, and that there was a fair reliance upon the owner, that that was this position. Of course, when they advertise it and say, I want to declare it, well, people show up, and they typically hold their hand out for something too. Okay? So I think it's inappropriate to think of it this way. Having been to the site, having known the neighborhood as long as I have, I think it's a very good thing to close out for the ownership of this property so everybody can rest easy. So that's why I've made the motion.
All right, any other comments? Not any commissioners abstaining? All right, we don't have any, so we have a motion by, Mr. Plumley, second by Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, oh, thank you. The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 0, Agenda Item Number 9 has been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Agenda Item Number 11, Danielle Good, is a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 397 Little Neck Road, Suite 307 in District 8.
Is the applicant here? Yeah. I just wanted you to know you have 10 minutes. I didn't say at the beginning because we had some attorneys that are representing the applicant, but I just want to let you know you have 10 minutes. And the speaker, if there is a speaker, has three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you for letting me just speak. It's my understanding that you are wanting to defer this motion to get a conditional use permit. When I moved here in 2010, it took me three years to find a place where I could actually do permanent cosmetics in this city with B2-zoned and all the restrictions. In early or late 2015, the restrictions were taken down, and in 2016, I was able to get a conditional use permit to open up a permanent cosmetic tattoo school. I was excited, I was so excited. I opened it, it went well. I also got another one in 2022 with another lady, and, because we had to move from that building. So that was my second one. And then I got a third one in 2003, which I orchestrated. It was in somebody else's name. Now I'm here for 2024. The reason I'm here is because I recently got unlawfully evicted, and there is another similar case going on right now with it. So I was put out of business. I had to close down my school for 30 days. It is really, it's been really hard. So I really ask you guys not to defer this. I really need to go through with it. I've been paying rent since May 1st, and I'm on a little wire going, eh. If you guys do defer it, that's fine too, I'll come back next month. But I do ask that you don't. I just put up the signs where I was told to put them up, and I understand that it wasn't the correct, in the correct spot, the building. Again, I've been doing this profession since 2005. I love my job, and I just want to keep doing it, and I've been operating without being able to do permanent cosmetics. I run this at school, so there's my money right there, but I would love to be able to do permanent cosmetics where I do it, when I do it, and how I do it. I've been also, I'm unable to be in my permanent suite until I do get my conditional use permit, which also hinders me from getting approved to have the GI Bill, the students be able to, who has the GI Bill, to come to the school. And I can't have them come out until I'm in my permanent suite and going by the, all the correct ordinances and stuff. That's really all I have to say.
That's, okay. Well, any questions? Mr. Plumley, your light's on.
Yes. So you agree that the sign was put in the wrong location?
I do agree that. I just put them where they, I was told to put them.
Right. But you agree that happened?
Say again?
You agree, in fact, that did happen?
Yes, because the building was marked wrong, yes, yes, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. You can be seated. At this time, we're going to call another speaker?
Yeah, we have four speakers right now.
Four speakers?
Three in person and one via WebEx, so.
Okay.
We'll start with Cynthia Schott, followed by Yuri He.
Afternoon. Just state your name, please.
My name is Cynthia Schott.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I don't even know where to begin. I came to you guys about two and a half years ago to open up a business with Ms. Good. I was very excited. I do paramedical tattooing, so I give 3D aerial lists to cancer survivors, lips to people that were born with cleft lip, hair to girls that are, have trichotillomania or various diseases. Ms. Good was my original teacher at the location that she spoke up on Virginia Beach Boulevard. So when she came to me and asked me to open up a school with her, I was extremely excited because the financial possibilities of that would have been amazing for my, for my family. I'm a single mom, and I have a kid in college, or in high school at the time. So we went into business together. I taught morning, two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon, I was doing my business around that. We had to leave that location, go to a second location. Shortly after we got into business together, there was a lot of illegal activity happening. When I confronted her about this illegal activity, I was threatened. They started putting trespassing signs up at the shop. There was letters from lawyers threatening me to get me for defamation of character. It's one of the reasons why I was very, very afraid to speak up today about what I've been through in the last two years. But I feel like I owe it to anybody in the future that would go into business or partner up with this woman, that their lives would be in danger, that their livelihood would be completely annihilated. I didn't know when I went into business with her that she had been convicted of meth. I didn't know that I would deal with prostitution. I didn't know, I mean, I would have clients, and I would try to, you know, when you have a breast cancer that comes in, it's supposed to be serene and quiet, a healing time for them. And she would be in the next room loudly doing what she was doing, and I would confront her, and she's like, don't like it, leave. So I went and hired a lawyer. The first lawyer I paid $300 to, he told me to mind my own business. Went to a second lawyer because at that point, they were suing to get me out of the building. The second lawyer told me that it would cost me too much money to get out of business with her, asked me would I pay her off. I didn't have the money to pay her off because I had just used my life savings to go into business with her in the first place. She took the students, moved them to a second location that was not zoned for a school. She continued to teach out of the second location that was not zoned for school. And so for a short while, I was safe, but she would periodically send people in. I have, here, I have, I went to the police three times. When I went to the police, I found out that she had reviews online about her business. I had women coming to my shop threatening me because they thought I was also doing this with her. I had men showing up on my business all hours of the night, refusing to leave. It was just two years of really bad. I also never got paid for the two months I taught. I had students calling me, begging for me to help them, and it was just a chaotic mess for two years. So the reason I'm here today is not to harm Ms. Goodbred, or Ms. Good. The reason I'm here today is to protect any other teacher that she's not going to pay, any other student that's going to take the class and be involved in this illegal activity, and any other business owner that would go into business and live what I've lived in the last two years.
Okay, we exceeded our time, but thank you for speaking. Any questions? None, thank you.
Thank you.
Yuri He, followed by Yufeng Chen.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Yuri He. Sorry, my English not very well, I speak very slowly. This is Yuri He. I work for the plastic surgeon, Carney Center, 16 years. So I am licensed permanent makeup instructor, and 2019, end of the year, I cannot remember exactly the month. Ms. Good, she was helping me doing the teaching work, so I did. I only get paid one time, then after that, she is despaired. I didn't get paid, and I asked around, I know she's in jail, but, you know, I have 14 students there, I cannot leaving them there, so I didn't get paid. It's 2018 February, I went to court, and she's in jail. I got the judgment, but they can, I cannot get my pay back because she's in jail. So this time, I'm really struggling because I am a single mom, my son in school, so it's really hard for me. I don't know what I say, just the truth right there, the paperwork right there.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Our final speaker is on WebEx, Yufeng Chen. They're no longer on? Okay, then that would be all the speakers we have.
And Chairman, I did just want to make one point. We did have another speaker signed up. She's chosen not to speak, but did want to make sure the commission was aware that she had submitted a letter of opposition that was in your supplemental package.
All right. This time, I ask the applicant to come back up and rebut what was said.
This is for rebuttal.
Rebuttal. Land use preferred.
Yeah. I have always been the sole owner of Virginia Permanent Makeup Institute and Advanced Permanent Makeup Institute. I've never partnered with anybody. There's always going to be some student, a bad seed, or some student that wants to say something, and that is the case here. And, you know, rounding up, and I've had over 50, 60 students, they've all been very satisfied, they've all graduated. A lot of them have gotten their state board license to do the permanent cosmetics. I also let them work out of the institution when I have my conditional use permit and have my health permit, so that they can actually save money to go out on their own, and I don't charge them hardly anything to do such. Yes, I was in prison, and yes, I came out, and yes, I opened up a school again. And I'm trying to do my best, and I've done pretty good. And I just ask that you don't defer, and I ask that you don't deny. I am proud of myself. Anybody that says I didn't pay them, I paid them, but for a long time, I've been the only teacher, and I've had a couple of teachers come in, it didn't work out. One of them, I wasn't even around when they were there because I was away. So I had no controlling over them being paid or anything like that, so that's all I have to say.
All right, let me, let me ask the commissioners, are there any questions? None? Okay, just have a seat.
Thank you.
I'll close it for public input, and at this time, we'll ask for additional discussion. Mr. Plumley? Mr. Plumley.
I wanted to make a motion to defer. If it's appropriate, I'll wait. If you'd rather have some discussion, that's fine.
Well, that's up to the commissioners. Any discussion?
I--
Oh, sure. Okay.
It's in tandem to second the motion. Once we learned that there was improper notice, I think it's important that we adhere to that process and defer this for 30 days.
All right. So I got a motion by Mr. Plumley to defer, and second by Ms. Quaylar.
If I could, George, just say briefly the reasons why I'm making this motion. That's sort of how we do it.
Yes, I'm stand corrected.
That's okay. Thank you. So if there is all of this contest and feeling that we heard, if we were to bypass the notice requirement, then these folks who appear not to be your friends could appeal the ultimate approval after council, is my understanding, and the basis being a defective notice. So it's really for the applicant's own good that the matter be deferred for 30 days so she meets the legal notice requirement and cannot be challenged for that reason. I just wanted to put that down.
Good point. All right.
The vote is open. By a vote of 10 to 0, Agenda Item Number 11 has been recommended for a 30-day deferral.
All right, thank you. That concludes our formal hearing for July 10.